All our meeting to order. This is the meeting of the City Council Redevelopment Agency for April 11, 2011. And I'd like to invite our colleague, friend, and council member from San Bruno, Rico Medina. If you would step forward and listen to the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, changes to the order of agenda. Mr. Malpe.
No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Item number three, report from closed session. Mr. Rubens.
Yeah, we have a brief report from closed session tonight. The council decided to initiate or intervene in litigation on one of the items and then on another, on the other item, later on in the agenda, you'll have an item that's related to the closed session item under Californian's aware.
Thank you very much. Item number four, council communications and announcements. I'll start from the right this time. Mr. Brasili.
Mr. Mayor, a couple this evening. Pardon my voice, too much cheering for the Giants.
The Giants, right?
I wanted to recognize, and I think a lot of people know this, that one of our citizens, Tuvia Bergen-Michelson, who's 10 years old, won the National Geography Contest.
State Geography.
State Geography. Well, I'm trying to give him a little pump up here. He's gonna win the, he's gonna win the national one. But the California Geographic Bee is what they call it. And I just wanted to make sure that he got a mention and some props from the dais. We hope to have him, and I know, Mr. Mayor, I think you've tried to reach him, hopefully, and get him down and we can give him a proclamation, but I wanted to make sure that he got some mention for that accomplishment. I can't even imagine all the information that he has. He beat out more than 100 students from around the state to win first place. And he's gonna go in May to compete against 50 contestants at the national championship where the first prize is a $25,000 scholarship. So, congratulations to him. The other thing I wanted to mention is that on the 1st of April, I attended a dinner for police and fire recognition hosted by the Peninsula Council of Lyons. And one of the people that was honored that night for a fire, excuse me, valor award was Charlie Behringer, who is the captain in the San Bruno Fire Department. Was one of the first responders to the terrible incident in San Bruno. And Charlie is a resident of San Carlos. And I wanted to make sure that he got noted from the dais for his bravery and for his valor. And again, he was awarded that evening a fire valor award, as were many of the folks in San Bruno and many of the folks up and down the Peninsula, police and fire, who responded to that, as well as many other heroic acts throughout the county. I don't think we realize that public safety every day does some amazing stuff to save lives and help people in our entire county. So, that's what I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Klein.
I only have one announcement, which I'm really excited to announce. Working the past month with the San Francisco Giants Organization, they will be bringing the World Series Trophy here to San Carlos on June 20th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. It'll be at Burton Park. We're gonna work with Parks and Rec and our Sheriff's Department to have that, and we'll have a nice little festivity for the community. Special thanks to Pat Bonds, the mother of Barry Bonds. I grew up down the street from them, and she helped me put that together. So, June 20th, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., there'll be more information coming out, but should be a good time to get pictures with the kids and everyone else.
That is gonna be so cool. Mr. Royce.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Grocott. Thank you very much, and no further announcements from myself. Move to item number five, presentations. At this time, I'd like to recognize council member and from our good friends in San Bruno, Rico Medina, and I'd also like to recognize Fire Chief Dennis Haig.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. Of course, you would introduce, to my left is our Fire Chief from the city of San Bruno. I want to thank you for allowing me the time and the opportunity this evening, the beginning of your meeting, to talk to you, and just let you know a little bit of what's going on in San Bruno, but most importantly for us to be here, to extend to you a proclamation and our sincere thanks and appreciation to you and to the city of San Carlos. San Bruno has been extremely fortunate that upon a disaster, we've had an outpouring of well wishes, contributions, donations, and support throughout the region. The response from our neighbors, like yourselves, was quick and effective, and this assured and helped us collectively so we could serve the residents of our community during this incident. That evening, on September 9th, as I responded up with the mayor at the top of Glenview to watch the inferno and the fire eruption from the ground, feeling the heat, watching the residents evacuated and those being transported who were injured, it was quite something to see. But it was also impressive and amazing to watch as it unfolded that night and all the response that came from around the county. In the first 48 hours of that incident, we had at least 500 fire personnel, 300 police personnel, who assisted this community and also helped the EOC room that evening. There are many examples that San Carlos also assisted and helped us throughout this process, such as the fire department provided obviously initial personnel and equipment along with the command staff. The Fire Chief served as the County Regional Mutual Aid Coordinator. He provided assistance with hazardous material, personnel, and equipment. Fire crews assisted families, your fire crews, to go back in to the homes that were now ashes to help those folks sift through what they could to get any mementos of what once existed there just the night before. Police personnel, including command staff, police officers, as well as communication and records personnel, responded to our requests for mutual aid. Additional staff supported as the public information officer functioning in the EOC room. We received assistance from your also very important city planning staff. The Assistant City Manager, Brian, was also there that evening, one of the shifts in the EOC, and assisted us in the public's information area. Rebuilding our community will be a long process, and it is and will be an effort with many challenges. However, with the support of our neighbors like San Carlos, we are confident our community will rebuild. I'm happy and very delighted to inform you that we already have residents that have taken out permits, plans have been approved, and many others are with designers and will begin the construction process in spring or summer. The investigation of the cause of the break and the pipeline and the explosion continues to be a priority of this community. As you know, the city of San Bruno participated and attended the NTSB hearings back in Washington, DC, and the PUC for California also held a meeting last week in San Bruno for all residents throughout the areas and counties to offer their comments and concerns. The San Bruno City Council and staff will continue to focus on addressing the safety of the natural gas pipeline in our communities. This will be a significant effort for all of us in the coming months and years. Shortly after the explosion, Council Member Royce and I were with Jackie Speer, Pete Gnee, and other staff members, trying to ensure and seeing what happened and wanting to make sure what happened in San Bruno never happens again anywhere or to anyone. Knowing what happened and why will not bring back those who lost their lives that night and will not put the neighborhood back together more quickly. But it is our duty to never forget what happened on that night, the lives that were lost, and how it changed the community forever. Steps must be taken to improve and protect the residents of every community in the future. I continue to be inspired by the residents and the progress that they are making. On March 9th marked our six-month anniversary of the disaster. There was a young man named Joey who lost his girlfriend, Ms. Morales, and there was thought that he would not even survive. But on that six-month anniversary at that site, there he stood, walking and talking amongst former neighbors and friends. On March 29th was the opening of our recovery center in San Bruno on San Mateo Avenue, and there was a gentleman named Alan, who I'd met a few days after the explosion, who was badly burned. And we've seen him subsequently at other events, and he's getting better, but for the first time, he was able to introduce me to his wife Cindy. She was extremely serious, terribly burned, and there was thought of maybe what her outcome would be. But there she stood that night, came over and greeted me, and as I had to say, it was a pleasure and a miracle to be standing there talking to her. With the courage of residents like these and the resolve of a community and the support of the city of San Carlos, we together will get through this, and once again, we will have a thriving neighborhood in the city of San Bruno. So, on behalf of the City Council, the staff, the residents, and a thankful community, we are here, Dennis and I, to offer our sincere thanks and appreciation to the city of San Carlos, its staff, its community, for all that you've done for us on that night and since that time. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you. One of the things that a lot of folks don't know about elected officials is that we actually get together frequently, and we spend a lot of time with each other. While they're from San Bruno and we're from San Carlos, we actually do spend quite a bit of time together. And that horrible night, there were a lot of phone calls that were placed out, and we mean this very sincerely, that when we saw the San Bruno Council respond with such grace, I know that everybody was very, very proud to call you a colleague, and I'm tremendously humbled by the effort that you, staff, Chief Haig, everything that you've done to not only come out of this, but come out of this tremendously and with so much dignity for all the citizens of San Bruno. So, again, it was great to hug you as a brother, and, you know, we're looking forward to great things in San Bruno. Thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
I guess we'll move to item 5B. Is there gonna be a report on this, Mr. Morin? I would. Item 5B, recognition and proclamation for Dr. Pu, I'm sorry, my glasses are going. Purvy Zavri DDS, Peninsula Children's Dentistry, New Berry Area Green Business in San Carlos.
Okay. Let me tell you a little bit about the program and about Dr. Zavri, and then I'll turn it over to the mayor for the presentation. The city of San Carlos was one of the charter members of the green business program here in San Mateo County. It is a rigorous program. Businesses have to go through an 11-page checklist, and then they are reviewed by each of the affected utilities before they get certified. It is especially true in the world of dentistry where the checklist involves recycling, appropriate handling of materials, et cetera, and I'm proud to say that Dr. Zavri is now the third dentist in San Carlos that has been certified, which is quite a milestone. She is our 30th green business, and we now have more green businesses than any city in the county. So, I'm very proud to make the presentation. I'll turn over to the mayor and present the proclamations.
Dr. Zavri. Welcome. Thank you very much. Now, I know among the things that you had to do was go through an audit, you had to do some other things, and you're dealing with your amalgam, is that correct?
Yes, we try to be as amalgam-free as we can. So far, my practice has been open a year and four months, and we haven't placed a single amalgam. So, there is place for amalgam in dentistry, but composite has evolved so beautifully that we should be able to do most of the work without amalgam. So, my office is amalgam-free.
That is tremendous. Thank you.
Yes.
And what is the address of your office?
1390 El Camino Real in San Carlos.
That is terrific.
So, it's El Camino and Belmont Avenue.
Excellent.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Zavri, what I would like to do is present you with a proclamation thanking you for your efforts in maintaining a green business, and we also have a recognition from State Senator Joe Semidion.
Oh, perfect.
And so, we, again, we thank you and
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Go to item 5C, presentation of proclamation to Celia Hartnett, San Carlos resident upon induction, and is San Mateo County Women's Hall of Fame. Please come forward.
Celia, I'm gonna read just a couple of moments of this, and I'd love to hear more about this. We heard about this, that she had been inducted into the San Mateo County Women's Hall of Fame, and we said, okay, that's our lady. We need to, we need to make certain that she knows that we love her. But among the things that I wanted to say is, whereas Celia Hartnett's dedication and enthusiasm and her volunteer work has earned her respect and admiration, there were some things that you've done here that are fairly interesting. Friends of Hutter and Wonderland Parks, the Boy Scouts, County Horsemen's Association, and HAND, Helping After Neonatal Death. You've taken on some tremendous tasks and have done some amazing work, and it is very, very clear that your induction to the Hall of Fame is well-deserved. We're proud of you, and we want to say thank you.
Thank you so much.
Please.
Thank you so much for taking time to recognize me this evening. It's been a little overwhelming, but also, especially this evening, when you hear some of the stories of the things that other people have done, it makes me realize I'm not all that special. But thank you for making me feel that way anyway.
Well, we'll just change for the record that, Celia, you are special. And we, and in terms of San Carlos, we are very thankful that special people like you are here. Now, you're welcome to stay for the meeting, but it gets long. We'll move to item 6, public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council members on matters not on the post of the agenda. And we have a few speaker cards. Mr. Randall, please come forward. Mr. Hedges will call you next, and Ms. Iglesias will call you after that. You're recognized for two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Brian Randall, San Carlos, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I would like to thank San Carlos for responding to San Bruno. I am giving you this package tonight so you can be aware of Waken Hut, and I want it on public record. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gentleman yields the balance of his time. Rich Hedges. Good evening, Mr. Hedges.
Good evening, Mayor Ahmad and
Mr. Hedges is recognized.
How are you tonight?
Excellent.
Very nice meeting. Some nice folks. I wanted to come and invite the City Council to a project that a friend of mine and I have been planning. We're on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission as policy advisory committee members. I've left cards for you with my home phone number and the email address. We are planning a trip to Contra Costa Transit Village. It's in Contra Costa County at the Pleasant Hill BART station. It is the primary example of a completed project. It's over 90 percent completed in a suburban development that has some density, medium density, but it has mixed-use housing, it has podium-style development, it has town homes, it has office buildings, and this has sort of evolved over 16 years. Amy Worth has been very involved in it. She's a commissioner with MTC and also an elected official in Contra Costa County. It is on the BART Pleasant Hill Station. It has the highest boarding of bicycles in the station, is on the Iron Horse Trail. It is a wonderful example of what can be done near a transit station to increase transit, to also increase your share of your housing jobs balance. And since you have a project that's at least on the books as being planned for the San Carlos area with near Caltrain, I thought it might be of interest to the council members. We've sent emails. I don't know whether you've received them or not. I would love to see you there. We're going to meet at the Millbrae BART station on April 23rd at 9:45 in the morning in front of the agent station, the booth right there where you go into BART. We are, have acquired 20 transit tickets from MTC. The first 20 will get that. I'm not sure how many will come. If one comes, we're still taking the tour. It opened my eyes, when I took the tour, to how wonderful this kind of development could be, not only for your young folks who are moving here, but for your seniors who are retiring, to keep them close to transit. Just remember how overburdened Ready Wheels is right now financially. You're on JPB, you know, and it takes a large share of the transportation dollar, and if we don't start putting our seniors near transit where they can use it, we're going to bankrupt Ready Wheels. So, this plays, this type of development plays so, so large a part in the future of this county, and it would be good for you to see how well it lives within a suburban development. Thank you.
Perfect.
Invite any questions, if you have any.
Mr. Hedges, just very quickly, I wanted to, for the record, your affiliation is with MTC, is that correct?
Metropolitan Transportation Commission, yes.
And that is the transportation agency that covers what?
It covers the nine-county region.
Terrific.
And they are the funding source for much of the transit in this area. They funnel both state and federal funds. They are the planning agency. They are the ones that are actually, and it's very important to this region especially because there's some, there are priority development areas here that are, along with ABAG, managing the priority development areas in Senate Bill 375, and also dealing with SB 32, I mean, AB 32, even though it's been stalled now by a suit, by an environmental organization, it will undoubtedly go forward later.
And just because a number of people are looking at this online and on television, if folks wanted to get more information, what is the URL they should go to?
It is an email. I can't give it to you right now, but we have it in the email that, are you talking about?
But they could go to MTC at www.MTC.C
To find out about all of the things I talked about, but most, but most generally for this, specifically for this development, the site for it is on the email that we sent out.
Terrific. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I would just also refer to my colleagues on the dais that you may want to check with your attorneys, but I believe accepting the transit ticket would constitute an illegal gift and would immediately declare your office vacant.
It used to be under the law that was passed
We've got a couple of lawyers nodding their head saying
I'm not sure if it still is, but what I would, what I would say is that, that it's not a Brown Act violation because it's out of the county, there's no business before San Carlos, and as long as you don't talk about anything you do here tonight or anything in the future with more than another member, I think the Brown Act is safe and sound.
No problem. Thank you, sir. Ms. Iglesias, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Eva Iglesias, live in San Carlos, and I'm here in my capacity as a member of San Carlos Green, an organizer of this year's Drive Less Challenge in San Carlos, a related topic to my prior speaker. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. In the past two years, San Carlos Green has organized two large educational projects around Earth Day, focusing on our elementary and middle schools. Last year, we organized the Live Green Challenge. Approximately 3,000 students from eight San Carlos schools received a worksheet with more than 30 actions that their families could take to lower their carbon footprint. Of the 3,000 students, about 1,000 completed some actions and returned the worksheets to win a prize donated by our eight local sponsors. So, this year, we decided to narrow the focus of our challenge and to make it really fun and centered around the community. We adopted the Drive Less Challenge that has started in 2009 in Melo Park, and it will take place this year in 13 Bay Area cities, including San Francisco, Melo Park, and Palo Alto. The San Carlos Drive Less Challenge is taking place now. It will run between April 6th and April 15th. It's open to everyone that lives, works, or attends school in San Carlos. And like last year, we have coordinators at each of the eight elementary and middle schools who are running school-specific events to encourage students and families to bike, walk, and even carpool to and from school. And at the end of the challenge, San Carlos participants should visit sancarlosgreen.org and tell us how they did in the challenge. We'll have prizes for the top participants in several categories, and we also have a friendly competition against the other cities participating. We're all feeling the impact of our crowded schools, congested streets, and even air pollution. At the same time, people enjoy walking, biking, or commuting with neighbors and friends. We feel that the challenge is a good reminder for people to live healthier, to walk and bike more. In our school in White Oaks, already we are seeing that many different, many different families that used to take the car to school are biking or walking, or, and we're already seeing a small reduction in the cars around the school. So, hopefully, these changes will last and will help us achieve the goals of the Climate Action Plan in reducing greenhouse gases. In a few weeks, we'll have specific results and feedback from the Drive Less Challenge that we would like to share with you, and we encourage the City Council to continue to promote and enable walking, biking, and other alternative forms of transportation. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Iglesias, the URL again for people at home is what?
www.Sankarlosgreen.org.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate all your good work. You've, we're kind enough to give us flyers, and I'll just say that we have a list of some terrific civic-minded sponsors here, and wish you good success, and we're looking forward to the report at the end.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing now, we'll move to item number seven, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine, being acted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of council, staff, or public requests specific items to be removed for separate action.
Yes.
Mr. Grocott.
Just item C.
Item C is pulled.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items 7A, B, D, and E.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brasili?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes. We'll go ahead and take item 7C. Mr. Grocott, you pulled it.
I pulled it because I thought we were at least encouraged by our moderator at these events where we have our retreat, our council retreat, and look at strategic planning to always keep this in the forefront to the public, and so I was just looking for an opportunity to do a very brief presentation on what those changes were so that it is public and people can follow it via television or whatever.
Okay. The request is made. Mr. Malpe, are you, is stepping up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Jeff Malpe, City Manager. I'm gonna pinch-hit this item for Rebecca this evening. There were several changes to the strategic plan this month. They include adding the city manager's task to present the city council a review of the customer service policy, which is under the goal, enhance community awareness involvement, objective number six. The date the assistant city manager presents to the city council, the pros and cons of a plastic bag ban from the council will be moved from May 23rd up to May 9th. And the date the public works director discusses the pros and cons of a downtown litter ordinance and provides direction to the city attorney has been moved from May 23rd to May 9th as part of a study session. Those are the main changes to report this month of the plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Grocott?
No questions.
I need a motion for this. Move approval of item 7C. Second that. I think we can take that without objection. We'll move to item 8, reports to council. Item 8A, update on proposal to provide recreation services to the city of Half Moon Bay. I see Director Long stepping up to the plate. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Doug Long, Partial Recreation Director. I present this with a tremendous amount of enthusiasm. Just to give you some background, the city of Half Moon Bay in January put out a request for interest for proposals to partnership to offer recreation services in Half Moon Bay. As you know, they're going through some very difficult economic times, and their programs were at risk to just absolutely go away. So, they decided that they were going to seek a different delivery models, service models to offer these particular services. So, this was taken up at the strategic planning retreat that the council has with staff, and at that point, it was decided that staff would actually submit a proposal and demonstrate some interest in partnering for those particular services. The Half Moon Bay received two proposals, ours and one from a not-for-profit organization, and at their last council meeting, actually considered five different options, one of which was our proposal, and that was the proposal that was recommended by staff to council, and at that point, they elected to go ahead and direct staff to begin negotiating with the city of San Carlos to formulate a contract to offer those services in partnership with the city. I'll be working with Half Moon Bay staff in the next couple of weeks to start I'll be working with Half Moon Bay staff in the next couple of weeks to start the negotiation process and developing a, an agreement. The kind of timeline on this is that we hope to have something in place at the time of the new fiscal year with the understanding that we'll probably be offering programs in the fall. We'll have to do some homework and formulate some new programs for them. And the idea is that in this, this model that we've become a service provider is that we have available staff to develop a, a program out there beyond what's currently in existence. They have been cut back significantly. They have 2.6 workers out there now working on their recreation activities. They've had to drop a lot of their programs. So there is a tremendous potential for us to go out there and enhance the existing programs and develop new programs. As you know, our programs here are very successful, have a very capable staff, and we do generate considerable revenue. There's opportunity out there with their facility and past participation to, to develop some significant revenues to help offset our general fund. So this is a great opportunity to lend a helping hand to a neighbor and to kind of bolster the recreation services out there. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Royce, you, you did attend this meeting, didn't you?
Yes, actually, city manager Jeff and Doug and myself attended. I'm really excited too because we have a situation, we have a great city next door. Everybody likes Half, Half Moon Bay. They have their financial woes, they're down to less than, you know, two half people. And we can help them out, and they're going to help us out eventually. When they kind of re-annex or, or reverse annex back to the county, they're going to have some good services from the county, things like a sheriff and things that probably will happen. Park and Rec, the county doesn't provide those services. So it's a good example of a partnership of helping another city, blending into shared services, and a great opportunity. Because what really came out in the meeting, was nice to be in a meeting, is the recognition of how well San Carlos does with Park and Rec. And we're going to be able to help them out a lot and have fun at it. So thank you for all your work, Doug, and your total staff.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Grokot?
I don't have a question, but I was, and I know this isn't an action item, but just a concern I have, not, well, I shouldn't put it as a concern, I should put it as a, just a comment. And that is, I would think that they might have some kind of measure of our contract as a receiver, and I would then hope that we have some, not that we report to them, but just internally, sometime, some type of measure of how doing this kind of thing might be affecting our own programs and our own staff. And, you know, keep, keeping, keeping track of that, I think would be important. It relates a little bit to what Mr. Royce sometimes talks about, you know, a performance evaluation of different programs and so forth. And I, and I think as we get into this kind of thing, if we're going to get into it this time or more, then to have something like that degrade ourselves, I think would be important.
Certainly.
Any further comments? Director Long, extremely exciting stuff. And this is obviously something I think everybody in the county is looking forward to, to see what else we can do. I know your staff is up to the challenge and looking forward to some great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll break away. Item eight B, verbal update on proposed Caltrain schedule. If I get somebody to help drive, I have a few slides. It ended up that I was going to give this report, so Director Wilder, you got to pass on this one. So to my colleagues on the council and to members of the public, I do serve on the Caltrain Joint Powers Board, and what I wanted to do was tell you at least where we are in terms of the Caltrain budget and what the citizens of San Carlos can expect with what is going on. I'm also looking at Joan Casman, who serves as council for the JPB, so if I am saying something incorrect, I'll look for you to wave at me. The budget for 2012, and the budget year for Caltrain is a July 1st budget, has not been approved, but this was the preliminary reports that you will see that was presented at the last meeting. Let's go to the next slide. What we do today for Caltrain is run on a weekday schedule, 86 trains. We, I didn't have the chart here, but one of the things that's interesting to note is that we are down from the high point of Caltrain service, which was well over 95 trains per day, and we have record ridership at this point. It is the highest ridership that Caltrain has ever seen. Here's the challenge. Revenue sources for this year are going to be about 72.7 million. The cost to keep the trains running is about 102, and there's where the, the reported $30 million deficit comes from. Next slide, please. We have been undergoing a significant public outreach process and taking public hearings, and what was proposed was a 48-train schedule. This would allow the current funding resources to be used and could juggle things together. But a 48-train schedule would essentially be commute hours only, very few stations, no weekend service, no Gilroy. Let's go to the next slide. And again, this was the intent behind the 48, which was keep the commuters going, try to minimize rider loss. The other thing was, could you effectively get trains from one end to the other, turn the crews around, and run them back? So that's how stations were determined. The other thing that should be noted is that 80% of the people who ride Caltrain board in 10 stations. There are a lot, lot more stations, but 80% of the riders come out of 10. The other thing that we wanted to do was try to balance the end-to-end turns such that you could run San Jose to San Francisco in 70 minutes. Next slide, please. Again, we touched on this point. The final station suspensions were not determined, but again, the criteria would be based on ridership, what other transit connections exist there, and what other neighboring stations could people go to. You can see the list of stations that were, were being considered. Next slide. This is a 48-train schedule. There is a couple of one-time expenses in the expense line, but essentially, you can come pretty close, and it's, you know, horseshoes and grenades, you can get kind of close to balancing the budget. Next slide, please. Here is what we did. We took over 2,500 public comments, several hours of public hearings, top five categories of responses we got from Caltrain. The biggest was obviously, don't close the stations. People absolutely wanted to maintain that. There was surprising support for increasing the fares. Folks who are midday service were pushing to maintain off-peak service. There is a significant contingent of folks who ride from Gilroy, and weekend service is somewhat interesting. While we run a smaller schedule, it is a very different ridership, and it is lucrative. We actually ran an experiment of limited service over the last couple of weeks on weekends. It was extremely popular. We found that we were just getting more and more riders. Next slide. So what has happened over the last several weeks was work with MTC, work with other regional transit bodies, work with, trying to find one-time monies. A 76-train schedule was presented to the JPB last week. Let's go to the next slide. Here are the numbers. We could essentially put together $97 million in funding. Again, a lot of this is one-time funding, but the expenses for running a 76-train schedule would balance out, we would have a balanced budget. This is a one-year deal only. Next slide. So what would happen? You would move from 48 trains to 76 trains. And this is a reduction from the 86 trains that we're running today. You would see some changes in midday service, and some of the end-to-end runs would be different, but the bulk of the service would stay in, stay in sense. Off-peak service again, we would run some Gilroy service. We, the weekend service would change pretty significantly, and yes, Giants would still be served. So there would be special service for baseball games. We heard pretty loudly that Giants fans, especially along the peninsula, demanded that service, and even the Giants got behind that too. Next slide. What happens here is weekend service would go to an hourly service, and a number of stations would be chopped. There would only be 11 stops. And again, this was kind of based on ridership demand, and it's based on the, it's based on data, and it's also on Title VI compliance. And I'll look to Joan if people really want to get into what Title VI means, but it was a complex formula, it is a federal standard that states we have to have stations available for, such that it does not present unusual hardship for people who would take that type of system.
Disadvantaged groups and disadvantaged cannot be included.
Thank you.
Disadvantaged groups and disadvantaged groups.
So again, essentially, it's, we cannot pose undue hardship on disadvantaged groups. Next slide, please. These are the stations that would be affected on the weekends with the 76-train schedule. Sad to say, San Carlos is in there. Next slide. Again, we are, with the 76-train schedule, would still run special events. That concludes the slides. What happened was, if you look at that number for 76 trains, the revenue that has been put together is $97 million. The 86-train schedule, as it runs today, is 102 million. There was consensus from the board that we're looking at a difference of about $5 million. There was a way to find a short-term solution that we could put together for two years to allow the 86-train schedule to run. Decision on the budget was continued to a meeting that is, I'm looking at Joan, April 21st?
21st.
Thank you. So April 21st, at the San Trans headquarters, it'll be 10:00 AM probably meeting. We will see what has happened. One of the charges was led by our supervisor from San Mateo County, Adrienne Tissier, who's also the chair for MTC, and she believes that there is an opportunity to find this one-time money. So for folks who are listening to this and concerned about what is going to happen, I wish I could tell you, but I would tell you, stay tuned. At this point, there is an opportunity to run a 76-train schedule, and there is active work trying to keep the schedule, as you see it today, rolling. With that all, I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are. Excellent. Seeing none, we will move to item nine. Nine A, public hearing, consideration of a resolution authorizing adjustments to the costs of services scheduled, user fees, for fiscal year 2011, 2012. Mr. Malpe, and also, I'm looking, Mr. Rubens, this is a public hearing, is there any special notice that we need to make regarding this?
Just before you consider the item, you need to open it up for public input.
Very good. Mr. Malpe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Jeff Malpe, city manager. I'm going to be pinch-hitting this item as well tonight. Before you this evening is our annual user fee update report. For your consideration is a resolution that would adopt adjusted fees for the coming fiscal year, fiscal year 2011, 2012. It is typical that the staff will bring you this report just in advance of our kickoff of our budget season, and April 25th, you'll have your budget study session here in these chambers that facilitates the timing of this particular report. The majority of the fees increased this year by 1.8%, or the Consumer Price Index for this area, as stated in the previous report that was done several years ago by MBS, a consultant that the city council and city staff hired to conduct a comprehensive user fee update for the city, built in this methodology. There are several new fees proposed by individual departments, and all the department directors are here this evening to be able to answer your questions about those fees. There's a number of fees that have been proposed to be removed for one reason or another. These new fees that are proposed this evening would take effect on the first of the fiscal year, July 1st, 2011. So I'll cover the administrative fees, I'll give you just a brief overview of some of what's happening in the departments. And then I thought, for the sake of sort of speeding this along, we'd go, once you get to your questions, after the public comment or before, however you want to handle it, we'd go department by department through all your questions, might be the easiest way to facilitate the discussion. So for the administrative-type fees, we've got photocopying, printing charges staying the same. We're eliminating the notary fees, we're no longer providing that service, and all the other fees in the schedule are increasing based on the CPI. The community development for building, they have two new fees proposed, a commercial photovoltaic solar permit at 281, and an address change fee at $94. A water heater replacement permit fee remains the same, and all the other fees are going up by the 1.8%. The planning fees, they've got two new fees proposed, the heritage tree removal, the zoning clearance for massage, and then they've got a whole number of fees that are proposed to be removed from the schedule. The community development planning fees continue, all the other fees, as noted in the other departments, are going to be going up by 1.8%. Parks and recreation fees, there's several new fees being proposed in this schedule. They include the outdoor basketball court rental, our Guado Park sunny site reservations, our Guado Park shady site reservations for picnic sites. The other fees are being proposed to go up by 1.8% with the exception of the ACC park view and patio room reservations fee being increased and the youth center rental deposits reduced. The police department fees, the background check fee's been eliminated, and all the other fees in the department are proposed to go up by the 1.8%. Public Works Department, which has a number of new fees being proposed, occupying a parking plaza space, post-construction stormwater, civil onsite stormwater design and review check, downtown sidewalk encroachment, to name a few of them. The rest of the fees are going up by 1.8% as proposed. So that's a quick overview of what's in the fee study. I'm sure you've got additional questions. The department directors are here to help answer those specific questions you might have. I'd be happy to answer any questions as well. So that'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. Let's start with, are there any general questions at this point, or?
One general question, do you have any kind of estimate of dollars there?
Pardon?
One point, what dollars, 1.8%? Talking about $5, $500, $5,000?
I'm, I'm trying to remember my, my former life here. I'm, I can give you a guess, man, I don't have the exact number.
I understand, and I'm not looking for the exact number.
My guess is it's going to be approximately $150,000.
So that 1.8% translates to $150,000?
Approximately, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was a general question.
Thank you. What do you say we bring up each department head, and we'll just go around the horn?
Terrific. I think we'll start with community development, if that's okay with the council?
Perfect. All right, fees related to community development, looking around. I'll start from our left. Mr. Grokot? Nothing? Mr. Royce?
Yeah, I have two, two items. Actually, the first one is part of the staff report on page five. It's not part of the matrix that we're approving. But it deals with the, the encroachment permit for restaurants, so San Ramos in town that have the outside seating. The current process is there's a one-time setup fee.
That's Public Works.
That's Public Works, Mr. Royce, I believe.
We're in community-
We're in community development. I apologize.
Oh, community development.
Yeah, community development.
Well, it was, planning, it was, is charging us, isn't it?
No, Public Works.
It's Public Works? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry.
Anything in community development?
Yeah, one other item.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. There is an item here on apartment inspection fees, that we do an annual inspection. I'm not requesting that we change the rate here, but as a future- but as a future reference point, I know there are cities that don't inspect apartments. We don't inspect our homes. And to me, an annual inspection is a little bit of a cost of the landlord and infringement on neighbors, the tenants who live there, where they get their smoke alarms and various things inspected. I would just look at some softening of, to me, annual is a little too frequency. The city's coming in and checking my property out when we're not consistent with residential, and again, with other cities. So, maybe the fee could be good, but because of the workload and so forth, I think that could be an opportunity where we could move to every other year or something. Again, no recommended change here, but as we look at future billings and services, frequency becomes part of the charge. And I think that's it for that area. Oh, and one last question. On appeals to planning and appeals to city council, the appeal process is within $150, but they're different. Planning is $150 more approximately. When there's an appeal for the approximate cost to do a staff report, to have staff at the meeting, to have a formal meeting for an appeal, should there be consistency between an appeal, whether or not you appeal to either of those bodies? Maybe, city manager, any opinion on that?
Well, the cost, the cost before you and the current report are based on individual specific study done by the consultant. So, they would be looking at, they looked at the actual process in preparation for both planning commission and council and came up with a difference.
Okay. So, you recommend keeping it, that actual, the process?
I would recommend, yeah. It's certainly justified based on the work that's been done.
The basis of everything else. Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Klein?
I have nothing.
Mr. Saye? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd just like to say I'm Chris Valley billing official.
Thanks for coming.
You did a darn good job there. Mr. Wile, looks like we've, I know we have some questions. Are we going to do rock, scissors, paper? I mean, moving on to Public Works, I will, I will start from my left.
Let Randy ask his question.
Well, you've got your question, so.
Well, no. Actually, I didn't see it until, because it's part of the staff report. So, I attended last week, Mr. Wile, Mr. Sivay and his staff in planning had a zoom in on zoning with about 25, 30 businesses downtown. And we talked a lot about that group, about the encroachment, again, the restaurant seating outside. And they were proposing several ideas on some more specific requirements on more stringent barriers and what to do with heaters and so forth. They've got a lot of input from that group, and I envision what Al has, Mr. Sivay has come back with, is kind of a work and study, where they're thinking about what to do with controlling the beauty and the flow of pedestrians and access to not only restaurants, but businesses downtown. And there's still work to be done. This, it's not in the fee schedule, but it talks in the staff report. Currently, there's a one-time fee. I think it's $280 or something, so that when a restaurant gets a permit for that, it's one time, and then it's done, because nothing changes. Once they do their outside seating, then it's monitored by, by your department. If they infringe on it, there's, you know, penalties and things like that. It talks about the fee now would be due on the anniversary date of the agreement. The annual fee's based on the time of the mid-process and the inspection time every year. So, because there's so much in-process work being done here, I'm not sure, if they're going to a whole new model and so forth, maybe there's more charging and annual inspections needed. But if little changes, why, you know, everybody that currently has a permit has it forever. It's grandfathered. New restaurants would need it, and I agree once, but I'm not sure it's fair to charge them every year for outdoor seating when our other restaurants aren't. So, I have, again, I don't, and I don't see it in the fee schedule. So, maybe we're not approving it. Do you know where that stands? Is it in process? Or is it in the fee schedule?
It is in the fee schedule. It's on the last page of Public Works.
Okay. I didn't see it. Sorry. Okay.
Sidewalk dining approval, Mr.?
Yeah.
Mr. Wile?
That's right. So, the, the proposed fee is 243, which would be?
The proposed is one time.
Yeah. But then under the unit is where, it's kind of hidden there. It says, it would be 243 each permit plus 245 per year for new application.
Yeah.
So, and the reason we recommended that is, is in fact because of the great amount of interest in the appearance of
Because of revenue.
The great amount of interest in the appearance and functionality and safety of the sidewalks. And as it is right now, we don't have any revenue to cover the cost of going out there once a year and, or more often, and making sure that things are as they should be. And so, this, this fee would help cover the cost of providing that service. And that's why it's recommended. Because, as I said, because there's, there seems to be a great deal of interest in making, protecting that asset and balancing all of the competing interests for that narrow piece of sidewalk. And there seems to be quite a lot of violation of what's in the agreement. So, this came before the council, oh, maybe six months ago, and I didn't really ask you for a direction as to whether you wanted an annual fee, but I got the sense that, that there was a great deal of interest in the council in it. And so, I'm coming back and proposing that to you now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, follow-up question, because when I read this, I didn't read it the way you interpreted it, and I want to make sure I got this understood correctly. If, if you were an existing restaurant and pay, you paid the one-time fee, do you now pay the annual fee?
No, you would not.
You're done.
And that's, yeah, that would be a concern to me as well. I don't think that sounds quite fair. You know, if a new applicant is now going to pay annually, an old applicant is grandfathered in, something seems unjust about that.
Well, I, my principle, the legal principle I was following there is that we did enter into an agreement with them. It's called an encroachment agreement, and it says, they will do this, and they will do this in exchange for this fee. So, given that they, we entered into a good faith agreement with them, my thinking was not to then impose an annual fee on top of what they already agreed to. But there was a fair amount of turnover in the restaurant business. Some businesses are there for a long time. Others turn over quite a bit. But with that thinking was just to capture the revenues from the new one, new businesses. I think we would still go out now and have a good reason to go out and start actively enforcing it, and we have some revenue stream coming in.
However, to, I guess this is for staff and the council. I understand what you're saying. It is an agreement. However, it seems like the new applicants who are paying on an annual basis are paying for visits out to enforce, and sometimes those visits might be involved with one of these businesses that is grandfathered in. You see what I'm saying? So?
Right. So, you are, what the policy decision here is whether to subsidize that service or not. I mean, whether you want the general fund to subsidize those businesses that have already paid their one-time fee. I think our intent, what we're saying is our intent is to start actively enforcing it.
Right.
And we'd get some offset to that cost by the revenue from new businesses. But otherwise, it would be a general fund obligation.
Does the city attorney have an opinion on this? Because it is a contract, and I see the predicament Mr. Wile is in, but is there any way out of that predicament?
Well, I, it's been a while since I looked at that agreement, and usually our standard agreements have some termination clause in them. And I don't know if it's, if they're time-limited, or if there is, if it's just termination for cause. So, I'd have to look at the particulars of the agreement to see if, if that was possible. And then, to, it's, and of course, the agreement, if it describes this payment as a one-time payment, that might be dispositive of the issue. But if it doesn't do that, you might have the ability to adjust this fee so that everyone is treated the same, seems to me.
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if the council has an opinion on this?
They could. I want to make certain that we've got all questions answered, and then we can come back for, for this.
Yeah, I, the question I had is, just if I understand this, ABC Restaurant started 10 years ago. They paid a one-time, one-time fee. They don't pay an annual fee. ABC Restaurant goes out of business and is bought by Joe Smith. Physically, he doesn't do a darn thing except maybe change the name on the door. So, now he's going to pay the annual, he's going to pay every year now.
That's correct.
Even though physically, he may not have changed anything.
That's correct.
Yeah. I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem if, I guess, you know, sort of to what's said before by, by other council members, we don't, I mean, of course, we have a gazillion restaurants. I think there's going to be less of them coming in, because I don't think there's the space to put very many more. There could be turnover, though. I'm not sure how much this is going to generate to begin with. I mean, I can think of four places right now that are going to open. None, well, one, one or two of those four might have outdoor seating situations. Because if it's just a restaurant, they're not going to be charged this fee. It's only if they have encroachment on the sidewalk. Is that correct? Okay. The other thing, it's sort of an aside, let's assume I had a business that wasn't a restaurant, but I decided to put some stuff out into the sidewalk to hang clothing or goods or a table full of half-price items. Does this come into play also?
Well, the municipal code prohibits that.
Uh-huh. Okay.
So, you couldn't get a permit for that.
Okay.
Now, the deceiving, some of the things that's a little deceiving is that, you see businesses that do that, they can do that as long as it's on their own property.
I get it.
And if it's an alcove.
There's a fine line where the sidewalk starts and stops. I get it.
If it's an alcove, they can do that.
Yeah. I'm a little concerned that, again, was raised. I'm not sure that because of the, well, it seems like there's going to be, if, I don't know how many restaurants we have in town, Mr. Moore might know, but there must be 75 or 100. I'd say 70, let's say 75.
Off the top of my head, that's probably pretty close.
Okay. So, let's assume we get five more. Those five are going to end up paying that annual fee. Now, some of those 75 are going to turn over. I agree with you. But I don't think the turnover has been that great every year. And so, you're going to end up having about maybe 15 or 20% of the people paying for all the others that are already there. And I don't know. I, that might be one that, when I read this, that was one of the ones that might be. I appreciate where you're coming from, though.
Yeah.
Because it does take time for people to go out and look at things when there's violations.
So. I guess my bureaucratic way of thinking about it is, is that this is something that needs to be done. I mean, we need to get somebody out there on a regular basis and look at it. It's a problem.
Well, maybe, I mean, as an example, and again, I'm not trying to do the, be a fee expert, but if you were going to do it on the new ones, you had $245. Now, you had to know that there's not going to be 20 new ones every year.
Right.
So, you must have extrapolated out a number that you thought could cover all of them.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Okay. Because that's what I would do. And then I'd take that number divided by every restaurant in town, and it might be 50 bucks. I mean, that, to me, would be fairer. Then you got, then you got everybody paying, you know, a nominal amount so that you cover your costs, because there are going to be violations. So, it's sort of like, one and all, they all have to, hopefully, they can almost talk to the other guy and go, don't do this. This is going to cost, you know, money, and let's keep it down. But otherwise, but it seems like the new ones are sort of overpaying for everybody else, in my mind, possibly. I'd like to hear the other council members.
Yeah, I certainly didn't intend, I didn't spread the cost of the whole program across just the estimated.
I understand. But it just seems like that would be almost possibly, possibly, a fairer way to do it. But anyway.
Mr. Klein, you used to get your head hit in some of these things, didn't you?
I still get my head in some of these things. Nothing's changed, no matter how many times I complain up here. And that's where my issue comes from. This issue doesn't exist because of future restaurants that are coming, fictional restaurants that have never come into town. This issue exists because of our current restaurants, because our current restaurants have shown a very lack of caring for whether people can get down the sidewalk, or whether people can actually stand up while they're walking down the sidewalk. So, why isn't there a fine if you violate? Why don't we get the revenue from that? If your department has to go out and enforce this, and there's violators, fine them. Make it monetarily irresponsible for them to violate this, and they'll stop violating. If the cost of that table goes into a fine, there's no point of having the table there. And, and my question is, when are you doing these checks? Are you doing them Wednesday during the day, or are you doing them Friday night? Because Friday night and Saturday night is when the major violations happen. You watch a lot of restaurants expand their seating capacity outside, because some of the businesses next door are closed. Is that legal? There's a lot of areas on Laurel Street where you cannot walk down, two people as a pair walk down side by side. So, if two people as a pair can't walk down side by side, how does a wheelchair get through? And that's my issue. I don't think this has anything to do with future restaurants coming in. I think you have to find the restaurants that are violating this. They are breaking the rules. We talk about a good faith agreement. They're not keeping up their share. So, I think we need to work in a fine and not go after the restaurants who don't exist yet. Go after the restaurants who are actually violating this and recoup your costs that way.
So, if I could summarize what, what I've heard from council is that there's some discomfort in the notion that the enforcement should be borne by new restaurants incoming. But there is a recognition that we do want to see some enforcement. And I think everybody would agree that Laurel Street and dining, and especially sidewalk dining, is important to San Carlos. So, I think I can sense a general consensus that we're not, the fee structure that we see here is not terribly exciting, but if we could look at something with a little more teeth, that, that may be more interesting. Is that, yeah, Mr. Royce?
And through the mayor, this is Adam, in my beginning comments, because the, the building, I mean, the planning department has, is currently working on zoom in on zoning. They're going to be doing so much work. Let's leave the rate unchanged as a one-time. And once we get formalized with what our ordinances are for all of our encroachment, for, for stores, restaurants, and everything that comes out of their department, then we should revisit how we actually pay, I think. Yeah, Mr. Klein had a great idea. There may be some other ideas. But let the fee structure, let, let the cart follow the horse. But the horse is, let's get the zoning, the ordinance done first, and then come up with a fee structure change.
In my case, the, the different analogy, I, I didn't want to miss the boat.
Through the chair.
Having Mr. Royce's comment, what's the timeframe for that? Mr. Malpe, for the zoom thing?
It's under, it's part of the zoning update, and I believe that they're planning on bringing that forward later in the fall.
Okay. So, when and if it would came forward, couldn't we at that time, or two weeks later, or whatever, set up a, a specific fee or whatever? We can, it wouldn't be retroactive, per se, but we can do it from that date. There's no law that says we can't start on January 1st or something.
That's correct. You could, you could update this fee at any time in the future.
Again, miss the boat.
So, just for clarification, it sounded as if the council was okay with the, with the increase in the fee, but, but wanted to see it remain one time for the time being.
And then we'll look on the other. I think that seems to be the consensus. Mr. Grokot?
That was my question. That's where, because we hadn't discussed that.
As we'll move forward, let's just note that, that the consensus of the council was keep it as a one-time fee, and, and we're okay with an increase. Any further questions?
I would also take direction from council that we should look at that encroachment agreement. That sounds like what we need to do. Have the city attorney take that out.
I think everybody agrees that, you know, Laurel Street is, you know, it's the heart of San Carlos, and we want to keep it, keep it vibrant, and people love eating outside, and we want to encourage that, but.
Through the chair?
Sir?
I would think staff might, I understand what Mr. Klein is saying, and I actually lean towards his resolution, because I tend to agree also that if a table becomes unaffordable based on a fee, you know, a violation, a fine, then the table goes away.
That's right.
However, I think some discussion with the chamber and with the restaurants to find out, hey, we're looking at this. We know we have this agreement with you, but we can either do a fine, and we're looking at that, or we can do an annual fee at this amount. Which do you prefer? And kind of put it on them. Put the onus on the business owners, which would they would rather have?
Currently, the enforcement mechanism is to say, to suspend their right to put tables out there, period.
How long has that happened?
We have never done that, but we have threatened that. We have never done that.
Further questions? Thank you, Mr. Wile.
Thank you.
Mr. Long, you are up. I'll start from my right. Mr. Griselli?
Any questions?
Mr. Klein?
Just a, Councilman Griselli and I had a quick sidebar here. Why does there no, you break them out as different costs between sunny side and shady side or Guado picnic, but it's the same price? Why not just picnic site?
For the Guado sites?
Yeah. Just curiosity.
Yeah, there's, there's really no distinguishing.
Just wondering.
Maybe you were going to plan.
Sunshine and shady.
Same price.
Some people value it differently.
Depends what you like.
That's right. Well, like, people could identify them that way, too. I want the sun.
That's true. Mr. Royce?
On block parties, last summer, did we have any applicants? Do we get a handful in San Carlos?
We got a handful, a half dozen, half dozen. Right.
Okay. And that's, I don't have a question then. Mr. Grokot?
I just have sort of a general question in light of what the school district is doing. Any, was there any weighing of what they're doing to what we're doing? doing. Any, was there any weighing of what they're doing to what we're doing?
In terms of setting our fees?
Yeah.
A little bit in our program fees, not so much in the fees that you see here, but in some of the program costs. We're cognizant of that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief?
And I will start from my left. Mr. Grokot, any questions? Mr. Royce?
My last question's a big one here. It's a $2 fee for copy of reports, property damage, or fatality. Why do we charge, I mean, for fatality, to get a report? To me, it costs as much to process a money or credit card as it is just to give them the report. Do we do tons of these, or?
No, thankfully.
Can we go free on it?
We don't do many of those.
Be a good guy?
I'm sorry?
Can we go free on these and not worry about 2 bucks?
I'm not sure. I think the council could possibly do that, maybe defer to the city attorney on that. But we charge, the $2 fee we charge for police report is really enacted by law. We don't really set that. That's the maximum that we can charge. And it's really designed to simply recover our paper costs on that.
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to eliminate, you know, get, keep it simple. It's not, doesn't do anything.
Mr. Klein?
I just, I laughed because it was $2. I was like, we're really charging $2. But I didn't really, I don't see, I don't care either way. If the councilman wants to get rid of it, that's fine with me. If it stays, it's fine with me either way.
Mr. Grisilli?
I know, you know, we're just covering, like you said, we're just covering paper here. So, I mean, we got it, unfortunately, we got to cover a lot, some of the basic stuff. We can't give every, I mean, I sort of agree that 2 bucks is not, but.
I would just.
Up to you, mayor.
Yeah, it's 2 bucks. I don't have a problem. Nobody's going to go broke for 2 bucks.
If somebody really complains, they can come over to me, and I'll pay them 2 bucks.
No other questions.
Further questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Malpe, any further presentations? I think we've gone through all.
No, I would remind the council, though, that this is a public hearing.
At this point, I have no speaker cards in front of me for the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this topic?
Hearing none, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Without objection, that's the order. Gentlemen, public hearing is now closed. We have a few notes to Mr. Malpe. Mr. Malpe, could you just tell us again what you understood from the council, at least in terms of these fees?
From the council's discussion on changes?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So we would be looking on the restaurant encroachment, sidewalk encroachment fee, keeping that, increasing that to the 243, I believe it is, up $4. But we would not be having an annual fee. We would, however, through the zoning process in the future, and possibly through meetings with the merchants that are involved, have a discussion about fines versus annual fees, and bring that back to the council at a later date. Let's see. We also had a couple, we had a couple other just sort of general questions.
I think that's the only change.
I think that was the only, the only change.
Perfect. With those notes, Chair will entertain the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of resolution number 26.
2011-26, Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos Authorizing Amendments to Fee Schedule for Certain City Services.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Item 10, New Business. Item A, Consideration of Authorizing Expenditure of $219,490 to Fund the Purchase of Trunked Digital Radios for Use in Police Services. Chief Rothas.
Good evening, Mayor Ahmad. Members of the City Council. Greg Rothas, Police Chief. I'm here before you tonight with what amounts to the last phase of actually the transition to the sheriff's office. If you recall in our discussions about transitioning to the sheriff, it was mentioned that at some point during the first year, we would have to make a one-time investment to change over onto their radio system. We are currently being dispatched by the Menlo Park Police Department on an analog radio system. And we knew when we signed the contract that that contract would expire this November, and we would be moving onto county system. Public Safety Communications is the only agency that dispatches for the sheriff's office. So that's where we'll be going in November when the contract with Menlo Park expires. And in order to do that, we need to move on to their digital system. And the price and what we're looking at right now is approximately $219,000 of one-time investment into those radio systems. I think we have about 167 of that coming from the general fund, and about 52 coming from the COPS grant funding. It's what we're requesting. This is something that really, this investment in digital communications is something that every agency is going to have to do by 2013. And we're obviously have to do that. There's a lot of ways to skin that cat for a lot of agencies, but for us, this is the way we're going to have to go. I think we have an advantage that most agencies don't, which is we'll recoup that cost in the first year of our contract with Public Safety Communications. We're already in discussions with them now, and we know that those costs will be recovered within 12 months of the contract with Public Safety Communications. So we have that advantage. So that's where's it, and I'm glad to take any questions you might have.
Gentlemen, any questions?
I have one. I think you've already covered it, because you mentioned the 2013 date. And it's been a while since I was on the Emergency Services Council, but there was talk there about, you know, coordinating all this public safety in the county so that in the event of an emergency that's more regional, everybody can talk to everybody. And that's what you're relating to, I believe, there. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's what this communication, digital technology is able us to do, to have more channels, more talk groups, to be able to talk across counties and across jurisdictions. You know, analog radio is a little bit, you know, like a two-bedroom house with seven people living in it. And it's kind of hard sometimes to put that channel. When you go into digital, there's more channels, and we just have a greater number of users getting on these analog systems. So everybody will be moving towards digital technology in the near future. This is how and when the county's doing it.
And one more question on that. Is there more security in the new, in the digital? Because there were some issues that I'd seen about somebody hacking into the system, if you will.
Well, the, my understanding is that there is encryption capabilities on digital communications, and so it's easier to protect those frequencies, I think, than it is in analog frequencies.
Thank you.
Further questions? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of a resolution number 2011.
27?
27. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos Approving the Use of 2008, 2009 SLESF to Purchase Trunked Digital Radio Equipment.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes. Thank you, chief. Item 10B, Consideration of Adopting Resolution, Adopting Street Lighting Standards and Authorizing the City Manager to Sign a Master Agreement with PG&E for Light-Emitting Diode Street Light Refit Program, Including Initial Work Order of $124,092 to Implement the Federally Funded Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant Program. Director Wile?
Thank you. About a 10-minute presentation. It's our first use of this new technology, and I mainly wanted to review it for the council, because the decisions we make now kind of set the standard for future projects of this type. And so, with that. Okay. So the project has a 0% local match. This is 100% federal funded, and it covers about 10% of our lighting inventory. We have almost 1,900 lights. So this 192 streetlights to be retrofitted is about 10%. And it's coming from the Economic Stimulus Program. We get a PG&E rebate as well. What we're doing is replacing the high-pressure sodium technology that was, that was new and exciting in 1970 with the LED technology that's new and exciting in 2011. And I think we're hitting the curve of this technology about right. You know, we're not the earliest implementers of this. There's, we're on the Generation D of this particular manufacturer, Beta. So, you know, they've made a lot of innovations in their product in the past couple of years. And it's a real clean retrofit. You know, this little arm that comes off of a street lighting pole, basically, you pull that off and slide this on and wire it up. So it's real clean. The, before, the previous technology, the optics were determined by this lens, this polycarbonate lens. And the LED has much more precise optics, because they can point the individual LEDs in exactly the pattern that they want. So what you see is, and this is a picture of high-pressure sodium and the LEDs, you see how the light's much more evenly distributed? You don't have these dark pockets and really bright pockets. It's much more even. Of course, the color's different. So you have a more natural color rendition and better rendering of, like, moving objects. It's easier to see things and see them more clearly. So that's a good public safety advantage. However, there's some concern about the glare from the lights. I've seen applications where it's a little bit painful to look at, you know, like the headlights that come at you on the newer model cars. So with that in mind, what I'm recommending is that we make a little bit of a sacrifice in efficiency in order to go with a warmer color. This is the 4,300-degree Kelvin color. And most, the more common usage is the 6,000-degree Kelvin color. But I felt that that, given the council's concern with preserving our distinct community character, that this was a reasonable trade-off. It's about a 10% loss in efficiency. But we still, we still come out ahead on energy savings with this particular application. But if the council wanted to go for the most efficient, we could renegotiate the contract and see what that is. That is a decision point I'm looking for from you. The locations, we're basically working from east to west. I wanted to try out this new technology basically in the industrial areas. And, but to use up the grant, I had to move in to the residential area somewhat. And I chose Britton Avenue for that, because it is an arterial street. And so it's, you see, it's Skyway, Industrial, Old County Road, Britton, and then we follow Britton up the hill. And there's one section of Old County Road that's part of a future underground utility and streetlight project that I took out of this particular project, because we'll be getting separate grant funding for LED streetlights there. It would have been easy just to replace the lights in kind, but I, being an engineer, I like designing to standards, and there's sovereign immunity in designing to standards. If I bring you a standard and you adopt it as the sovereigns of this particular governmental entity, we have legal protection. And so the applicable standard, the industry standard, is the Illuminating Engineers Society of North America Roadway Lighting Manual, RP-8. And we worked with the lighting reps to pick which standards we should use out of that manual. I initially started with the higher level, but we would have lost money. I mean, we would have had to put in more lights in order to meet the standard, and we wouldn't have gained any energy savings at all, even with going with the higher efficiency technology. So.
Director Wile, can I ask you a quick question? Just, we're having a little sidebar. On your highlighting of the map, does this stop at Crestview on Britton Avenue, or does it continue?
Stops at Crestview.
Okay. We just, I wanted to make sure I didn't have to recuse myself, so. Still good.
So it's, we're using a collector street with low pedestrian activity for these four streets, and residential with low pedestrian activity for Britton Avenue west of El Camino Real. Now, the local streets that aren't called arterials or collectors in our general plan, we are doing a replacement in kind, saying that, you know, we're not trying to light those to a particular standard. It really would be impossible to do that, because the lights are just kind of haphazard on those streets. And in fact, even on these streets, there's some areas where there just isn't enough, there aren't poles to put these lights on. So these streets need to be grandfathered in as not meeting the standard. Two sections of industrial road and one section of Old County Road. So energy and cost savings, we would be able to achieve the savings that you see here. The thing that's really impressive about these lights is that they last a long time. And, you know, street lighting seems to be a real customer service issue in San Carlos. We get a lot of calls, more calls on street lighting than on any other customer service area. And it's frustrating for a citizen, you know, that the light's out, they call in, they usually don't know exactly which light it is, and we have to send somebody out to figure out where that is. It takes us time to do that. Then we have to get the contractor on board. Sometimes there's some other, it's not just a bulb, there's some other problem with the light. In the meantime, people are saying, well, this is a safety problem. My neighborhood's dark. And so this technology offers a real advantage here. And then one direction this technology is going is a network of streetlights. Since we have solid-state technology now driving this light, we can network this technology together, and the streetlight will report itself when it's out. So we know precisely where it is and what the problem is. And that also allows the streetlights to be dimmed in the early morning hours, so you can get further energy savings there at a future date. I'll just briefly cover the contract. That's covered in the staff report, but we're basically saying there's, PG&E is the, we didn't go out and advertise for other people to do this contract. We went to PG&E as the turnkey LED retrofit specialist. They really are the only ones that can do the retrofit itself, the changing the rate schedule, and getting you the rebate, all with one shot. And it is a design-build contract, and that's, so this is appropriate in the municipal code for this, that type of contract. I called my former employer. They were doing something similar, except they decided to go out to bid for other entities to do this work. They only got one bid, and it cost them about 10% more. So with that, I feel really, and that this is the best deal we've got going on. So with that, I would recommend that you adopt this mouthful of words, and be glad to answer any questions.
We have one comment card. Bob Black. Mr. Black?
I'm Bob Black from San Carlos. I'm pleased that we're having this upgrade to our lighting. And our new Public Works Director informed me right away when he was planning, when he had this opportunity, which is quite different from the experience I had with our previous Public Works Director. These lights will be, as he covered, they will be more efficient, so they'll save energy. They will provide less glare, because they'll all be, they'll all be full cutoff, which will make them safer than the existing lights that are not full cutoff. And of course, from my standpoint, amateur astronomer, will protect the night sky. My only disappointment is that I had a, I've had a dream that we could have special lighting down industrial road, which would be unique to the area, and which would attract business to our industrial area. Means this is a retrofit. We just can't do that. So that's a disappointment. And of course, these, having a really long life, they'll, I won't have another chance to do my pitch about the industrial light, industrial special lighting that I, I always hoped we could do that. So, but as time goes on, we're going to be replacing all the other streetlights with these, but it, as was pointed out, it won't be part of this job. As we do replace them, we should consider eliminating as many lights as we can. Put lights where safety is paramount. And that would, in my opinion, that's at each intersection, and there could be other special places where safety is important. Then we should also consider whether it's feasible to dim the lights at late night. Then we should also consider whether it's feasible to dim the lights at late night, when traffic is low and other ambient light is low, so a lower level of light would be acceptable. And we should consider, in residential areas, having as low a Kelvin temperature as is A 10% reduction in light is barely detectable. So even a 20% reduction in light for a given energy would be probably not noticeable and probably not a safety issue because with the reduction in color temperature, you get less blue and less scattering and less glare. So those are factors we might consider. Otherwise, I'm pleased with this project.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate that. Any further public comments? Seeing none, I'll move to council questions. Mr. Grocott.
I just had one question. I don't think Mr. Wile was here when the lighting went in at the train station. And when that lighting went in, boy, were we getting a lot of calls because it lit up, not just the train station, but I think the whole east side and El Camino and so forth. And I don't know what their solution was, but they did manage to dim those and turn them down. So my only concern and my question is particularly along Britton, if it proves that, while you've chosen this a little lower lumens, if that still is too bright, do we have a means to turn down the lights a bit?
Well, but we, back, go back to that picture. Let me show you. It's the number of LEDs. It's the number of these LEDs that determines how much light they put out. They come like with 20, 30, 40. Most of them we're putting in are 40, but the range is from 20 to 100 in our job. So if we had, if we, say on Britton, if, you know, people said, gee, that's too bright, we'd have to swap that out with one that had fewer LEDs, and then try to use that somewhere else. So it would take some, it would take some doing. I think that, you know, I feel confident that this won't be overlit. I feel confident that it won't be like the train station. Because for one thing, we are designing to a standard. We are designing to a very reasonable standard, I think. And so it could be undone, it would take some work to do, and I don't think, I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Okay. I'll trust you on that then. Okay. Thank you.
Maybe one idea, Mr. Grocott's point is get the industrial stuff up and turned on and check it out, and then do Britton last, if that work process can work.
Yeah. I think our contractor's going to be--
They do it all once.
Right through.
Yeah.
Mr. Klein?
No questions.
No questions.
Just a couple of things. First of all, the old materials, are we going to be able to recycle the sodium?
Uh.
We should be able to.
Yeah. There's a, I don't know. I'd have to check on that and get back to you.
Good place. Second of all, you did mention that this is solid-state, so we are going to network all of these light systems?
No, it provides the capability for that, but that is not part of this project.
Understood. And great. And then the, in terms of choosing the Kelvin temperature, that is a function of power or is that a specific LED choice?
An LED choice.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is there a motion?
Please. Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2011--
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting streetlight standards and authorizing the city manager to sign a master agreement with Pacific Gas and Electric for their turnkey light emitting diode streetlight retrofit program, including an initial work order for $124,092 to implement the federally funded Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant Program.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes.
We'll have fun, Director Wile. I think it's going to be a great project. Item 10C, new business discussion of mediation between the City of Belmont, City of San Carlos, future partnership opportunities related to fire and emergency medical services. Mr. Mora.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council, Brian Mora, Assistant City Manager. And we have two fire items, the first of which we're going to talk about the county's free mediation offer. As the council is aware, in February, the county had an opportunity to pass through a contract to the City of San Carlos for fire service with CAL FIRE as one of the potential fire service options for the city. That would have been an opportunity for the county itself to save $650,000 towards its $80 million budget deficit this year, and it would have been also an opportunity for the City of San Carlos to save up to $2.5 million per year in their fire and EMS costs. The two supervisors on that subcommittee voted no, and because there were only four supervisors at the time, that effectively eliminated the city's ability to have that fire service option. The county supervisors did, however, offer to the two cities a so-called free mediation offer. They offered to pay for mediation for the two cities to explore partnership opportunities both today and in the future regarding fire and EMS services. As part of that offer, the county council, the new county council, selected a mediator from the service JAMS, which is based in San Francisco, Judge Haning. Since the offer was made, the City of San Carlos Mayor and Vice Mayor, which were at, both of whom were at the meeting on February 15th, accepted the offer the same day in the interest of moving the mediation along in February. The city council added their voices at the suggestion of Councilmember Grisilli at their next council meeting on a unanimous voice vote. And then there was a letter sent from Mayor Ahmad to the county supervisors on March 1 indicating San Carlos's interest. So we moved pretty quickly to move the mediation on, and as we all know from this sad saga, it didn't quite work that quickly. The two supervisors talked to Belmont during the entire month of February and also during the first couple of months of March without success. Belmont finally did raise this issue on their agenda. It was not shown as a fire mediation, but rather under the title of city manager report on March 8th. So they began the discussion on that date. And then roughly a week later, Supervisor Grimm issued a letter to Belmont giving them 10 final days to respond. This was issued on March 15th, and Belmont had until the 25th to respond. And three days before that offer expired, on the 22nd, Belmont did respond on a split vote of three to two. There has been some comments, both in the media and on some of the local blogs, about mediation and fire board meetings. There seems to be some confusion in Belmont about the difference between these two items, so I thought it would be appropriate to go over this quickly. There was a comment made by one council member in Belmont that we should quote-unquote "mediate" like we did five years ago. But of course, we didn't mediate five years ago. However, what's interesting is there has been a past mediation between the cities of San Carlos and Belmont. It occurred 15 years ago with the harbor annexation issue. As some of you may recall, roughly 15 years ago, over 85% of the property owners in the harbor industrial area petitioned to annex the City of San Carlos. Those were both the property owners in the San Carlos sphere, as well as the property owners in the Belmont sphere. And ultimately, 60% of those properties did in fact annex to San Carlos after a multi-year controversy, I guess we could say. But in that mediation, which was held at the JAMS office in San Francisco over a weekend with a mediator, we had council members from both cities. We had legal counsel, Ms. Casman was representing San Carlos, and there was a special counsel representing Belmont, as well as the city manager and the assistant manager from both cities. Turning to the other discussion regarding the two cities, in this case over fire, five years ago, what we had is a series of special fire board meetings to discuss things such as changes to funding structures, JPA management. Prior to the, current JPA, for example, the two city managers hired and fired, the fire chief, today it's done by the board, the city managers are outside the management process of the JPA. So just to clarify, the county offer was for mediation, not for fire board meetings. In terms of the process, since this council acted, there have been a series of, I guess we could call mediations about mediation. The two attorneys, Mr. Colan Tuono from Belmont and Ms. Casman for San Carlos, have been meeting regularly now over the last several weeks with the mediator, Judge Haning, and a number of issues have been raised. There was a concern about having full-day mediations. Belmont preferred half-day mediations. I think we're now at the point where there's agreement that a full day, since this is only going to happen on a day, is probably most appropriate. There were talks about the process, and at this point, as I understand it, the process will be sort of a standard mediation format where each party will be in a separate room and mediator will shuttle between the rooms and look for common points of agreement. There was also some discussion about whether the mediation should be at JAMS in San Francisco, much as we did last time 15 years ago, or whether it should be more local, and the decision was made to hold the mediation here in San Carlos City Hall in the former police department offices. And there is a date, by the way. The date is April 22nd, which is a couple of days before the council is scheduled to make your decision on a fire services option. Other questions that have been explored by the two attorneys and mediator are representation, whether it makes sense to have two council members from each city be represented or one council member. And we'll talk to you a little bit tonight about that. In terms of some of the key issues, again, we talk about one or two representatives from each community. I think in San Carlos, both the special counsel, Ms. Casman, and city staff are comfortable either way. There does seem to be a preference from the folks in Belmont for one rather than two, and also the California Aware Group that we've received some correspondence has also weighed in saying they would prefer one. I think tonight, the council will need to discuss this particular question and decide whether you wish to send one or two reps, or you may wish to outline how you might perform under either format. You should be aware that the City of Belmont has a comparable report on this topic at their council meeting tomorrow night, and they have seven different options to choose from, which includes mediation, special meetings, facilitators, a whole variety of items. So they may move forward mediation, they may move forward with something that's completely different than what we're talking about tonight and what the county has been talking about. The second area that staff wanted to highlight is the question of setting a deadline on the mediation process. We think it's important to note that on October 25th, you have two significant items on your agenda that evening. One is the final decision on which of the fire proposals in front of you you will select, as you know, and we'll talk about a little bit more on the next agenda item. You have fire, you will have fire proposals in front of you, including a city standalone option, the proposal from Redwood City modified by staff, it's not the original Redwood City proposal, but rather a hybrid, and also a proposal from the Wacken Hut Services folks. All three of those, at the moment, appear to save in excess of the million-dollar benchmark that you set for us last March. April 25th is also the budget workshop night, and that is significant because if you take action on the fire meeting, the very next item on that agenda will be the budget item, and you'll have an opportunity to adopt a balanced budget if you take both actions that evening. And with those factors in mind, staff tonight would recommend that you set an April 24th deadline for the mediation process to be complete. Given the current schedule of an April 22nd mediation, it appears that that is doable. And then the third item that we wanted to highlight for you is to, in the spirit of the council report format that we have, where as whenever possible, we try to provide the council with alternatives, we wanted also to highlight for you that another alternative that you do have is to step back for a moment and actually think about whether you wish to continue with this mediation process. Some have asked the question of if mediation was really urgently supported in both communities why it didn't happen two months ago when it was first proposed. I think that's a fair question. Obviously, some of the things that we've observed in watching this process are the split vote in Belmont, the fact that the two Belmont council members who did vote against it have seemed to have been the most vocal opponents of this process since that time. There have been litigation threats, and there have been some pretty aggressive comments. There's also a question in staff's mind about if the mediation is to be held and there are recommendations that come out of it, how likely are those recommendations to move forward? The fact that in San Carlos, there was unanimous 5-0 vote suggests that the results of mediation probably will have support here. There is a question, though, about will they will have support in the neighboring community. And then I thought, before we took action, I would like to provide an opportunity for our special counsel, Joan Casman, who has been our representative in the pre-mediation discussions, to come forward and share some of her thoughts with you. So Joan, if you're--
Right over there. Okay. Just here? Thank you. As mentioned, there has been a great deal of attention given to the closed session that was held by this council on March 28th regarding anticipated litigation. We feel then, we feel now, that there was an adequate basis under the Brown Act to hold this session. The mediation being not necessarily the subject, but the symptom of the broader facts and circumstances that we feel give rise to the potential of litigation, not necessarily that the City of Belmont would file suit against us, but that there are a number of stakeholders and other persons that have a great deal of interest in maintaining the status quo, that probing, that a mediation that probes existing circumstances and explores some perhaps even significant changes to the status quo could lead to an ignition of a pretty volatile situation. This is a sensitive and controversial subject matter. So as a result, we've reached the point with people, Cal-Aware, that have raised objections to the closed session. We've reached a point where we felt that what would be appropriate was not to continue the distraction, was to put ourselves clear the air. What's been requested is that what was deemed an improper action under the last closed session wherein the council at that point designated two people to represent it at the mediation, that we revisit that issue. There is certainly good reason to revisit the issue because there has been a lot of discussion, as Mr. Mora mentioned, with special counsel for Belmont, as to how best to have each city represented and be sure that we are clear of any perceived objections or transgressions under the Brown Act. There are people who believe that despite the fact that this, we think, is two different cities, each of whom are members to a JPA, who are having the opportunity placed before it by the county to try to drill down and see if we can resolve some disagreements, some of which go back many years, that if the representatives of these two cities look like the fire board, then it becomes a perception of a different kind of meeting. That is not our view, but certainly if that becomes a distraction, that's a view that we would like to at least honor and try to approach the representation on this mediation team in a different manner. So with that, I would like to tell you that the recommendation from staff, should the city desire to continue with the mediation, would be to propose one council member to the team representing San Carlos. Belmont would do the same. And in this way, we feel that it would be safe and free of further distraction, further effort to have to explain ourselves, and an opportunity to conduct this mediation in a manner which the retired Justice Haning has reinforced and stated to me on many occasions will make it more effective. He sees no way that a mediation can be conducted in an open setting. And he has been quite surprised by the conversations that have been taking place in the last couple of weeks on this issue. And I would like to mention also the county council, who I was dealing with at the outset-- county council, who I was dealing with at the outset in learning about who would be selected by the county as our mediator. County council also has been somewhat surprised by the conversation, and he from the outset also assumed that the mediation would not be a Brown Act event, and certainly it wouldn't be effective if it were conducted in that manner. So I'm happy to answer any questions or clarify the recommendation, if you have any.
Just before we go into that, I have no speaker cards. Any members of the public care to speak on this topic?
Excellent. Let me just put, let me put some direction to this about where, where at least my head is, and then I'm going to invite council to speak in. This has been a fatiguing event, and when we sat down with the county some months ago, I remarked that the first time that we sat down with the county in the 30 days since Egypt had thrown out a dictator. Since the time that mediation was suggested to this council, not only did they throw out a dictator, they voted on a new constitution. And at this point, we still haven't been able to get into a room. We have put no preconditions on top of what we did. We agreed at the county invitation to sit down and do mediation. I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's a problem that I don't have an emotional stake in this. If our colleagues in Belmont want to come to mediation, we'll look forward to it. If they don't want to come to mediation, okay, I don't have a problem with that. If there needs to be two people present in a mediation, from the mayor's directive, I would like consensus from the council, there would be probably myself and Mr. Royce. If it is going to be one person who goes, I will attend as the mayor. If it is the council's pleasure to say, we've got three good proposals, and from folks who want to work with San Carlos that save us money, let's put our heads together and move forward. I will also state that this process has gone on for quite some time. I am not inclined to keep this going past the deadline of April 24th. If it is the pleasure of our colleagues in Belmont to meet on Saturday and Sunday before the 25th, happy to do it. I don't care. If they want me to meet tomorrow, I'll do it. We didn't put any conditions. The invitation was, will you meet? We said we will. In unanimous council consent, we said we will meet. So my recommendation to the council, at least here, is if it is the council's pleasure to move forward with the mediation, and if two people are going to move forward, that that mediation team be made up of myself as mayor and Mr. Royce as at least somebody who's never served on a fireboard. He can come in with a new viewpoint. If there is going to be one person who serves, I'll step forward as the mayor and do this. If it is the council's pleasure to not move forward, let's make that decision and convey that quickly, and we can move forward. That's at least the direction I'd like to set from the chair. I'll take further comments.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Clark.
To Mrs. Casman. If we were to accept going forward, continuing to go forward with this mediation, and Belmont accepts tomorrow night, when would the mediation meeting happen?
It is currently scheduled for Friday, April 22nd.
Okay, that's my only question.
Further comments?
Mr. Grocott.
Go ahead.
So I, I do have a question, just in terms of how it works, because quite frankly, when I read that, in the paper
Mediation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Quite frankly, when I read in the paper that, you know, the county supervisors were offering this, I imagined meeting in a room with five council members on, you know, and five council members. And we've always talked about that, you know, because we've always dealt with fire in this, in this manner of either the fireboard discussing something and bringing it back to the two councils, and then they vote on it and bring it back to the fireboard. Or even before that, when we were dealing with the JPA agreement five years ago, it was dealt with the same way. It was never the two councils in the room together at a table talking about it. And, and I actually think there's probably a longing when, when you hear that the communities would like us to mediate, I think that's what they imagine, is let's get these two councils together and let them lock horns if that's necessary, or whatever. So I'm a bit surprised that it's two council members or fireboard members, whatever, you know, two representatives from each party, and then sitting in separate rooms with this guy running back and forth and saying, okay, they said this, what are you going to say? And, you know, being a messenger, a messenger. I was surprised to hear that's the way it is. And partly, I'm surprised to hear that's the way it is also because I've been through a, a type of mediation before in my life, and it was sitting down at a table with another party and a mediator there, we're in the same room, talking, and that person's acting basically as a referee and an advisor, saying, okay, you guys, if you don't want to agree on this, this is where you'd take it to court, and this is probably what would happen in court, and so, you know, and you would spend this kind of money, et cetera, et cetera. So to wrap this up, I guess where I'm coming from is, even if you have two, or if you have one representative, how does, I, I would expect that representative has to carry some kind of predetermined message from this council, and if things come up that are in the gray area, are they going to have to say, well, I'll take that question back to my council, or are they going to be authorized to make a decision right there? And part of the reason I ask that question also, Joan, is because I'm looking at this timeline, that's pretty short.
Right.
So you have one mediation, and you get certain things determined, and you have certain questions that are still hanging afterwards that that representative couldn't answer on behalf of all five of us. So it seems to me you'd have to have a, a meeting, come back to this council, go back to Belmont Fire District Board, discuss those items, and then, you know, I would see some back and forth, and what I see is one meeting and, you know, hail Mary pass. So talk to me about that.
Oh, you
Or Mr. Mora, or Mr. Malpe can talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me take the first shot at that. Just so we're clear, for the sake of the public and the council, it's our anticipation that any potential discussions or fruit that might be born in a mediation would be brought back to the council in open session for discussion. So I think, on the one hand, I hear what the mayor is saying, saying he'd like this wrapped up by the 25th. On the other hand, we certainly, should the mediation happen on the 22nd, we'll be reporting to council on the 25th as to any potential future discussions or commonalities that were identified in mediation, so that the council could have a broader discussion, give staff and their council representative to mediation additional direction on whether or not you wish to proceed or not. I also think it's important to note, from the presentation that Assistant City Manager Brian Moore made briefly, there's actually another presentation, and that's Councilmember Grisilli's proposal that he will be discussing about sort of modifications that could be made to the existing JPA, which might also filter in with some of the discussions that are had in mediation.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing to what the city manager said. I would agree with everything that Chef has said, but to Councilmember Grocott's point, you know, it's, again, some of these ideas were actually raised five years ago. There was a proposal, I believe it was from Councilmember Lewis, if I remember correctly, or former Councilmember Lewis, about having the two councils meet. He referred to it as a five-by-five process, by the way, and it was decided at that point that it would be better to have a two, two-by-two process, not unlike what we have at the school, two-plus-two committee, with the two fireboard members of each city, which back in the day was Corlin Firebrand, Dave Warden in Belmont, and Mr. Grocott, and Mr. Grisilli in San Carlos. And again, I think that's where some of the confusion lies, in that we did this at a fireboard setting last time. It was a two-by-two, as was originally cast this time, although this time, I think certainly the intent was to honor, at least on our side of the fence, the supervisor's request of a traditional mediation and not a fireboard meeting. But because of what happened five years ago, I know Ms. Casman and I had this discussion earlier today, that I think some folks are remembering history and assuming that it has to be done the way it was done last time. I, I think as far as timing, I can certainly understand Councilmember Grocott's comment about time is limited, and I would agree. And I guess, you know, the only sad part here is it's unfortunate that the Belmont acceptance of the offer didn't occur in February because that would have given us an opportunity to perhaps have several mediation sessions.
So I, I heard some answers. There's still one thing left to discuss, or, you know, an answer I'm looking for is one or two people going to a meeting to mediate. What, what is the role of that person or persons, and so how much importance is there to being two versus one?
Well, I, I think the importance is the fact that if there are two, we're going to have static in terms of the Brown Act. I mean, if, if we, if we have two people, um
Can we, I'm, I'm sorry, Joan.
Yes.
Can we put that aside for just a moment? I'm just trying to look at the machinations of the actual conducting of a mediation process, two people versus one, plus, I would suppose, a staff member or two as well. So I'm, I'm looking at the, you know, the dynamics of that meeting and the process and what comes out of it, putting the Brown Act aside. I understand what you're saying in there, and if you want to make that point
So let's put the Brown Act aside.
For a moment.
That has been a big detractor.
Right.
Mediations can take many, many forms, and I understand the, the kind you were involved in is, is very common in, in court situations involving generally smaller disputes. But the traditional mediation format is that are, that judges, retired judges, the JAMs judges are most familiar and commonly use, is to have the party sequestered in, in different rooms, and to have the mediator go from one room to the other and listen, listen critically to each party to understand what are the driving issues that have kind of formed a disagreement, why are the parties where they are. The reason to have two rather than one, in my opinion, is it's more of a critical mass and yet not a quorum, because the mediation is not a forum in which anyone anticipated that actions would take place. It really is a forum for communication, and sometimes communication is, is more effective in smaller groups than in large groups. And I think in this case, and I know that we all believe in transparent government, and we accord ourselves in that manner, but sometimes a smaller group outside of the video camera and outside of a public audience can sit down and say things, sometimes with a little more candor. Now, mind you, there would be no, no actions, but what can be brought back then to the larger group is some commonalities, some ahahs, perhaps some new perspectives that may be gained through the process, through the communication and listening process. So to have two members there as opposed to one, I think makes it a, a bit easier to come back to a council of five. You only have to sell three more people, or really one more person, in order to reach an action. If you're, if you're one council member, at the end of the day, if there are some commonalities, if there are some, some proposals that the team would like to come back and share with the council and, and hopefully reach some direction on, there would be the need to sell it to at least two more people. So I mean, the more that are there, perhaps the, the easier it is when you come back and, and try to bring results back and sell them to your colleagues on the council. And also, I think, to have two as opposed to one provides two minds rather than one in terms of sharing the position of San Carlos, the issues that San Carlos has experienced over time. And of course, three would be a quorum, and we certainly couldn't consider that. Does that answer your question?
It raises more questions, but I won't bother you with them. It does answer the question, though.
Mr. Grisilli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. I'm sure when the mayor made his comments, he was not implying, and I know he wasn't, that it was, it's completely on Belmont's onus that this hasn't happened quicker, realizing they did take a longer time and didn't approve until 3/22. But I've been asking for weeks whether it's chicken or egg, and I think part of the problem with the delay, apparently, has been this Brown Act situation and special councils, and nothing against you, Ms. Casman, but special councils and all this static or background stuff that has delayed this thing, and very frustrating to this council person. So I know, Mr. Mayor, you weren't throwing the onus completely on Belmont's shoulders for, for this delay. I mean, there are other things that are going here. But the thing I have a problem with is why is it April 22nd? Why isn't it April 13th? It gives us no time. I mean, let's be realistic here. If we, if we set the time, and again, through the chair, if we set the time of April 25th, there's no time. When we, when, when Mr. Grocott and I had these meetings, and we had them at least two a week, two or three a week, as I remember, and again, it was a bigger situation, we were trying to put together the JPA back together, you have, we have no time. Why can't we meet on the 13th or 14th and give people a chance? Then by next Monday, we'll have, you'll have, even if you only meet once, you'll have an indication whether it's going to go anywhere or not, we're done. We don't have to worry about it. Or if it does, you've got an extra week, or we've got an extra week. I'm very frustrated with that, because it just, assuming we take the 25th as the date, it gives us no time at all. Why not meet the 13th?
Well, it, it's a matter of schedules, really, in getting this group of people
Well, there's only, assuming we only go one on one side and one on the other, and a judge, we got three people to figure out, because staff works every day. So we only have three people to figure out a schedule for, isn't that correct? And again, I'm not jumping on you, Ms. Casman.
Yeah, that is
You didn't set the schedule. I'm not setting, jumping on you. I'm just
No, I, I do think
Venting frustration.
Yeah, you know, I, I hear you. I hear you. And I, and I think that that's one of the reasons it, it would have made it easier.
Well, can't we change it?
Mr. Malpe?
Yeah, if I may, through the mayor, we provided a wide range of dates, both to the mediator and the city of Belmont, as we had the same opinion that you have. We've been very anxious for weeks to begin this process.
Who couldn't meet?
I'd have to go back and look, look at the notes, but it was not for lack of
I'm not saying you didn't try. I'm not saying you didn't try. I'm just vent, I'm just verbalizing
Absolutely, and
We, we are boxing, I mean, we're boxing ourselves in, in my opinion, to a situation that can't have a positive, any kind of a positive outcome, even though Mr. Belmont has volunteered to meet over the weekend.
To be clear, just to add a little bit of color to this, Mr. Grisilli, all of the dates that were presented to me were approved.
I know I
So if there was a date that came in front of me, I said
No, I'm not, again, I'm not casting that you didn't. I'm sure you were, you were very, I'm just concerned that two other people couldn't get their schedules together. That's the thing that frustrates me.
Yeah.
I mean, because if we set this date for the 25th, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, it just, it just locks it into a, it's almost, it's almost impossible in my mind. And at least it gives us a chance. We could discuss this on the 18th. We have a special meeting.
That, you're correct. If we could have a mediation in advance the 18th, we could agendize this for the 18th as well. And we can certainly go back to the parties and, and reiterate that fact.
Well, again, I'm not, I'm not
That's what the council wants us to do.
Again, through the chair, I certainly am not voting for, for other people here. But I would recommend, I would, I would propose that we, if, assuming Belmont approves to go to mediation tomorrow night, again, that's the presumption, that we do it way sooner than later, because it just gives both parties more time to come back. Because we, no matter whether you send one, two, or three, as you mentioned, Ms. Casman, we're going to have to come back for approvals.
Right.
And it just, it just, it's, on the 25th, we're not going to, let's say we had a positive meeting on the 22nd, but it's not complete, and I doubt it could be, we're, we're just going to be in a, in a, in a jackpot.
Well, I, I mean
And I apologize to the mayor for my frustration, but I, but I just, it just seemed like we boxed ourselves, not we, but the, the process has boxed us in here.
Right. And I think to reiterate the comment that was made earlier, you know, we've been at this mediation thing now for over two months.
Mm-hmm.
Without any luck. It's really the, it's really the 25th that's boxing us in, and the 25th is derived from the city's need to deal with October the 13th.
I'm not, I'm not discounting that date. I'm just, I'm, I'm hopeful I'm just, I'm hopeful that two other people could clear a schedule to show up to a meeting. I mean, but again, my frustration, through the chair, I apologize to my fellow council members, but this is very, very frustrating to me.
Through the chair. Let me get some other comments first. Mr. Royce?
Sure. So, to me, there's no frustration. I think it's, we all understand the purpose here. The purpose is to have mediation with the city of Belmont. We know we each have some of our own priorities, some of our own goals, and by getting together and talk, there may be a hit on one or none or 10 items, whatever it is. And so, the original concept of mediating with them, and what's different in this point is when the board of supervisors recommended that to us, we, at that same meeting, I believe at the tail end of the meeting, the mayor offered to mediate with Belmont. I don't get too hung up on timing here, but at a later point, Belmont had a meeting, and they voted on it to mediate with the city of San Carlos. And that vote was 3-0, which tells me that the city of Belmont is 100% approved and supportive of mediating with us, even though there's two council members that may speak, that they're not going to maybe participate or whatever. The vote's been taken. That council is representing all the citizens in San Carlos. So, to me, it's a win-win to mediate because we have two cities totally wanting to mediate. It could be done in a half a day or a day, and then maybe something that comes out of it. Expectation maybe nothing comes out of it. So, that's my point on the reason to do mediation. The timing, I'm a little different on, because there were concerns talked about timing. I think mediation can be helpful, but not critical to the major work that we need to do to look at fire options in San Carlos. That's primary, what we're doing. While it may help, it's not critical to the process. And my last point is who, although I personally would love to work with the city of Belmont, I have a lot of respect for many of their council people. I have even more respect for all four of my fellow council members and the mayor, and think that we're smart enough, articulate enough, and represent San Carlos well enough that any of us could represent the city, whether or not it's one or two, and I may defer to the mayor to maybe make that best decision. So, I could go either way in that, but I'm looking forward to chatting with no expectations, but there could be some good out of it, and let's get it done.
Mr. Klein.
I really don't have a terrible lot to say, which is random, on a, something of this importance. When it comes down to timing, I mean, we haven't done anything on time when it comes to fire. Every single date we've set has been delayed and delayed and delayed, so this isn't a shocker that this is coming down to the wire. I think that's expected. But the big date's October, and our date has to remain April 25th, so I think we have to have inclusion on mediation April 24th. It'd be great if the city of Belmont and JAMS could provide us with an earlier date, but you have a retired judge who does this for a living. Their dates aren't as well open. They do this for a living. They don't come to our beck and call. We kind of have to fit our schedules to them, and that's just the way it is, and the county pick the judge. So, if we were to go back and select another judge, I'm sure that would muck up the system even more. Every time we change something, we keep having to come back and talk about this, and we don't have time to talk about this again. So, if we have to pick one representative, I would, of course, throw my support behind the mayor. I believe just get it done. Am I hopeful, kind of? Am I pessimistic, kind of? I don't know if it's going to work, but it's worth a shot, and that's really all I have to say. So, I just, I think we send the mayor in there, and we'll see what happens.
Mr. Grootkot, you had a final comment?
Oh, I was simply going to say that if we take an issue night on this, we could throw in Mr. Griselli's comments as part of our motion, that, you know, we send one or two, however we come up with that, and at the same time, that we direct staff to at least query if we can get an earlier date than what we have currently on the calendar.
So, as I understand, at this point, I'll put forward this function as a, as direction and look for consensus, which is two representatives from this board would be myself and Mr. Royce. A single representative would be myself. Happy, just chuckle of happiness, if folks want to meet earlier, I'll meet earlier. I know I've got stuff on my schedule. I will clear my schedule if they want to. But I will remain resolute that this thing needs to come to a conclusion, and I will leave it to Belmont. If they want to meet, happy to meet. If they don't want to meet, tell us that.
Is that a motion? Do I hear a motion in the cell phone?
Yeah, I think I'm just looking for consensus. Do we need to make it as a real motion?
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to make a motion.
Let's make a motion.
So, I will look as if that, somebody would take that as a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve, this is going to be a tricky one, yourself and Mayor Royce, if we were to send a two-person team, or yourself, if we were to send a one-person team to mediation with Belmont and to ask our staff to push for an earlier mediation date than the 22nd, if possible.
Perfect. Motion is made. Do I have a second? A second, Ted. And I'll look for a roll call.
Oh, excuse, Mr. Mayor, discussion?
Please.
Okay, again, I apologize. This is, I guess because I lived through this before, and I appreciate your patience in this. First of all, I must disagree with my colleague, Mr. Royce. This is extremely critical, because if it's not critical, let's not do it. This is part of the options, in my opinion. This is an option. If we don't want to work with Belmont, let's not work with Belmont. But if we do want to work with Belmont, it's a critical option. It gives us another path, in my opinion. Okay, so I must disagree. And again, with my colleague, Mr. Klein, we're paying these people. We're paying JAMS, or whomever.
The county's paying them.
Whomever paying them, they work for somebody. So, you ask them, they should be able to show up. Okay? If we can't get Judge Hannig, we get somebody else. He's not the only judge in the world, and I'm sure he's a very respected jurist, and no slam on him. I mean, that's the problem I have. We're paying, somebody's paying for this. So, I mean, those are my two comments. I would support the motion. I believe, as done by the mayor and by Mr. Royce or the mayor himself, the 25th, I'll concur that that's the date, but I would, I would really put, push, being the operative word in my mind, to see if we can get this. It gives us a chance.
Do what we can.
And if the other council members don't feel that it's imperative to push this, then we shouldn't do it at all, because it gives, in my opinion, gives us another option. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for taking more time than I should have.
Understood. Well, again, the direction of the motion was to try to push for earlier.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grootkot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor, mine?
Yes, moving to item 10D. Discussion of meeting format, special council meeting on April 18, 2011, for a presentation of fire and emergency medical services, proposal to the city of San Carlos, and potential direction to staff by city council on the proposals. Mr. Mora.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Next up is the discussion of the meeting format for our special meeting next Monday on the 18th. In developing the meeting format and talking with the mayor and the city manager, we patterned this largely on the process that you used last year for the police presentations. However, we thought it important to go through this just to make sure that everybody was in concurrence and had no concerns. So, what we're thinking is, as I said, the special meeting on April 18th, meeting tentatively could start at 7:00 PM. We would start out with public comment from the community on items not on the posted agenda, as you typically do. We would then have public input on comments from the public on the four proposals, and then after taking that public input, we would have four fire and EMS presentations in one-hour blocks, roughly. Then we would have, after those four presentations, time for the council to provide what I'm calling comments and input to the, our fire consultants, TRIDATA, as well as staff for their report to you on the 25th. Staff envisions, again, similar to the police process, having TRIDATA, your fire experts give you some pros and cons of the four options. The one problem that we see in looking at the 7:00 PM start time that we talked about with you last meeting, is that given that we now have four proposals, that takes us to roughly 11:30. So, one of the observations we have today is perhaps you want to start more like 6:00 rather than 7:00, get you out a little earlier, something to think about. Overview. The meeting would be a study session. You'll hear the four presentations and public input, and again, you know, the typical meeting elements, called order, pledge of allegiance, et cetera. And then we, in the staff report, gave you several format questions. We're assuming that you want to hear public comment and the input prior to the presentations. We're assuming that as with the police presentations, each proposer would have 30 minutes, and that after that 30 minutes, you'd have roughly 25 minutes for the council members' Q and A, talking to the mayor and the city manager. To achieve that, we would probably divvy it up as five minutes per member, and that also then would give us five minutes setup and changeover between each presentation. We do, as Mr. Malpe indicated earlier, we do reserve time here for 30 minutes for Councilmember Griselli's presentation, as well as Q and A, so he's on the same platform as with the other three presentations, the standalone, the Redwood City, and the Wacken Hut. We do point out in the staff report that we're assuming that the council wants to see the TRIDATA report and wants to wait a week between the time you hear the presentations until the time you take action. But we're just highlighting for you in the report that you could, in fact, take action on the 18th if you choose, and if so, or if you think that's a possibility, we'd like to agenda it accordingly. If not, we're going to treat it strictly as a study session, which is how it's currently designed. So, with that, take any questions or discussions from the council, and again, if you'd like, we can go back to the prior slides so you can see some of the items you may want to kick around as you talk about the meeting format for the 18th.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mora. Before we move forward to council discussion, what I did want to just present to council my thinking about the questions. What I am hoping for in this study session is, from the deists to the presenters, a very efficient question session. What I would further hope, I know that this council is very good about reading its reports and reading the materials, that what I would really hope is that the bulk of the questions could be pushed to TRIDATA for them to do an investigation, and for questions that we present to them should be answered for all presenters. And the fact that it is TRIDATA doing this as our consultant, I would like to see, to the extent, an impartial set of experts really dig in and get those answers for us. That's why I felt a little bit better in trying to restrict the questions to that extent. But that's my thought. I am looking for input. Mr. Klein.
Just a couple of comments, Mr. Mora. The first one is, I agree that we shouldn't, it should be just a study session. I think we need that week for us to get another analysis and report and possibly leave that up for action on the 25th. I don't think even leaving the possibility for the 18th to have direction is a good idea. It should be treated just as a study session. Second of all, and of course, this is probably up to staff and Councilmember Griselli, I would like to see Councilmember Griselli go first. It just makes the most sense. And you can join us up here for the rest of the night.
That's what we were thinking, yes.
He tends to be pretty short in his comments, anyway, so I imagine you're probably not going to take the whole 30 minutes.
I'm not going to take 30 minutes, no.
Yeah, so maybe let, if he does go first, let the presenters know that they're not going to be going on that 30-minute clock. There'll be less time from, he'll take less time. And that's it, that's all I got.
Mr. Griselli?
No, I appreciate the items up here. I'd be happy to go first, and mine is not going to take 30 minutes. There may be questions that would come through, and again, just, again, providing another possible option for us to look at, not trying to muddy the waters, confuse it, but I figure the more options you have, the better chance you have.
And just for clarification, the materials you'll present will be distributed with the standard packet?
Yes.
Great. So, the public will have a chance to see that before?
Yes, they will, in the standard packet.
Perfect.
Yes.
Great. Mr. Grootkot?
I would agree that, you know, I don't, we just voted on mediation, so I would agree with Mr. Klein that item seven, it's just, it's council discussion, it's a study session. And you said already, that's the way it's set up.
That's what we're assuming, yeah.
You know, otherwise, why do mediation? It's not going to be included in the thought process. You had something up there about the start time, and...
Yeah.
You know, I get a little tired of meeting at 6:00 all the time, but that said, there is a lot there. I think you might need to include some stretch time for us, you know, and that sort of thing, some, you know, some actual breaks. Maybe we get two presentations, take a little bit of a break and so forth. So, I would like to suggest maybe a compromise of 6:30, because I think this is going to be something that the public may want to attend, the press as well, and getting here at 6:00 is, can be a little difficult when you're getting off work and so forth, so maybe we compromise and go for 6:30. And then, I don't quite follow what the mayor is saying about, I guess we would hold most of our questions for TRIDATA? Is that what you're saying? And not for the presenters themselves?
What I want to do is be very efficient with the questions we're going to have to the presenters, again, recognizing that we've got a number of presentations, but if there are questions, what I would like to do is make certain that those questions are presented to TRIDATA and have them address it in their report as an independent entity to say, "This is the question that Mr. Grootkot has asked about subject X. Proposer one would do it this way. Proposer two would do it this way. Proposer three would do it this way."
That I don't feel so comfortable with. I mean, if I have a question of the presenter and I want to get a clarification, I'd like to be able to do that.
And what I would ask is, here's my challenge. I can appreciate that, and I really do. What I want to be cognizant of is I don't want to take a one-hour time slot and watch it turn into a three-hour time slot.
Well, I can appreciate that, but I could also, you know, I'm just trying to imagine how that would work. If I had to do my business that way, where I had a mediator of sorts, or a consultant who is, you know, the client couldn't ask me directly, you know, "What did you mean when you did thus and so to the design of this house?" And I had to go tell somebody else, and then they had to tell the client, that just wouldn't work. So...
With great respect, we do that continually. We refer materials and questions to professional staff. We return to our attorneys, and we have them come back with the appropriate interpretation, and then we make a decision. So, I'm pretty certain there's not a point where everybody goes down to every single detail. And again, I want to be very respectful to the idea that this is an important decision, and we want to make certain that all the information is out. I'm asking for great efficiency, and...
Appreciate that.
If I may make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor. To the extent that the council agrees to this format, they're essentially agreeing to limit themselves to five minutes per question, per presentation. So, perhaps that would be the format. You might be providing a suggestion to council on how they might be more, most efficient, but I think we could leave it up to the individual council members on how they spend their five minutes in terms of questioning, you know, as a compromise here, moving forward. And I'd also remind the council that, you know, to the extent possible, if you could provide us your questions in advance of this item, we'll be able to try to address them in our presentations to be more efficient.
That would be helpful, and again, I've, you know, I've come to know this council does do its homework and does come to the deist fairly prepared, so I would encourage any questions that we can provide beforehand. Let's get them up front. Mr. Royce?
Yeah, just, I think we all talked about this and leave it up to staff, the whole thing about having a long night. What affects me more is having dinner at 4:30, and I don't have a problem with energy at 12, but I think some, whatever time, starting earlier, some kind of break in the middle or some food or half hour, just to re-energize energy and food, because it is an important night, and a long night, and I want to make sure a presenter at 11:00 or 10:00 o'clock is, I'm out a little bit of energy and a little bit out of food especially, which affects energy, works something out. I think we all talked about that. Yeah, regarding questions, I like the mayor's point of documenting, have TRIDATA do the data, but there is, and I could do this within the five minutes, there could be a question or two that I could do within the five minutes to the presenter on the hot seat. I think it's important to see how they react as a vendor, as Mr. Grootkot said, too. So, hearing what the mayor said... So hearing what the mayor said, I think the combination of them going through their presentation, by the way, the five minutes will be after all the presentations, or after each one?
After each one.
After each one.
After each one.
So I think we could orchestrate that, so that within the five minutes, it's a two-part. You ask your one question or two that you think is important, and if you think it's more appropriate, and try to get, you know, here are three others I'd like to know more about next week to TRIDATA, that's a good combination, to spend your five minutes within that amount of time. Or, you know, included, I think an hourish presentation, maybe even with Q and A, maybe enough for each of the presentations for time, rather than an hour plus five, maybe do it, the whole thing within an hour, and, oh no, that's two, no, you've got five of us, yeah. Nope, I go back. Again, I agree with what you said, let's do both. Let's allow, be able to ask specific, what I call hot seat question or two, and questions to TRIDATA, that's a great idea.
And I think, through the chair, I think Mr. Malpe's idea is really, really important. I think we might have 10 or 12 questions, and I could certainly submit them ahead of time, or save a couple, like Mr. Royce said, a couple of hot seat ones. Mr. Gocott, you know, wants some information from, we could go from TRIDATA, but the point was, we could have those answers before we even get here.
Yeah.
Which would really-
Which would be tremendous.
Streamline the process.
Again, I-
And you might want to hold a couple back, because you want to see what they respond on some.
Yeah. And again, as I've stated, this council has been very good at preparing and understanding what's going on. What I want to be clear with, you know, I'm not going to sit here and go, it's four minutes and 59 seconds, you're out of here, but what I do want to be clear is, we're going to try to take turns and be efficient. People should not expect that they're going to get 30 minutes of Q and A for themselves. So that would be the expectation. Looks like Mr. Randall is warming up, so we'll go ahead and take public comment. Come on up, Mr. Mora. Mr. Randall, recognize for two minutes.
Brian Randall, San Carlos. On both these screens you put up here, I see, I see that public comment is up front. How can the public make comments when they haven't heard anything yet? They don't have any information. Have I got that right, or have I missed something here?
Do you yield your time, sir?
Pardon?
Is that the end of your comment, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman yields a bounce of his time. As with every meeting, all packets and all material are presented to the public and available on time. Even Mr. Griselli's proposal will be distributed with normal packets. So luckily, the public will not be stumbling in here, not knowing, and I'm pretty certain, Mr. Randall, you have a few opinions that you will be sharing, with or without the data that may be presented.
I guess, through the chair, the other comment I would make is, remember that this meeting, the 18th, is in the format of a study session, and that was the reason that we suggested, as the mayor's pointed out, that we would have the public input up front. When we have the actual decision meeting on the 25th, there'll be yet another opportunity for the public to comment and discuss, and I think the staff's intent was that would be the meeting at which we would hear the detailed public input. So there'll be two bites of the apple, that's kind of what we were thinking.
Then, I'm just looking for a consensus, would a 6:30 start time work for everybody?
Yep.
And I'm going to take to heart that this is going to be a significant meeting, so I will call a brief recess after two presentations, or maybe three, depending on how quickly Mr. Griselli goes. But we will have a break. I'll ask my colleagues to try to respect the questions, I don't want to cut people off, but I think we get the idea of what the format is. And again, what I am looking for is TRIDATA as the experts that we have hired to really do the hard investigation, and do the due diligence to verify that the questions, you know, somebody can come up here and say something, but I really like the experts to go through and validate that's what it is. Is there further?
Mr. Royce asking for a, you know, when I do my cycling, you go 15 miles on a 100-mile ride, and you have a rest stop, and you can get some food, and he mentioned food, did he mean that-
I mentioned this one, I'll get something up here, can we eat in this room?
Yes.
I'll get an energy booster here by about 7:00, 7:30, I'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Just to know what to expect, otherwise I'm bringing my own, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I'll, you know, I expect there to be some good public, I'll see if I can bring some treats, too. So everybody should have fun.